We'll start with the roll call of members.
Councilman Russell.
Present.
Councilman Miller.
He is running behind, but will be here tonight.
Councilman Baum.
Howdy.
Councilwoman Austin.
Present.
Councilman Worschek.
Here.
All right, if you all please stand and join me in the Pledge of Legions.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Well, thank everyone for being here tonight. We've got an abbreviated agenda with a couple important topics we want to get to, and then, of course, we want to get to one of the main attractions for this evening where we talk about our departing Town Manager, Mr. Norton, and all of the work he's done over the next five years. So I'm looking forward to that and also for the discussion items on the agenda. With that being said, and with Councilman Miller running a little behind, I would make a motion to restructure the agenda where we would table Item B, make parental leave the first item for discussion under New Business, then go to the sledding hill as the second item, and then we'll discuss the leadership transition as the third item, and we will move the trailside PUD amendment down to Letter D under New Business under this revised agenda. And we will keep other business farewell as the last point on our agenda.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Is there further discussion, comments, questions, or concerns? All right, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed nay, motion is adopted. So, I have three forms of folks here to speak, but from what I can tell, they are all on what is now New Business Item D. Is there anyone from the audience that would like to speak on a non-agenda topic? Seeing none, we'll move on to unfinished business. Having none of that, we'll move to parental leave flexibility. Jason, will come on forward. So as we had discussed in our previous meeting, and Kevin, am I coming through okay on the audio tonight?
I'm sorry?
Am I coming through okay on the audio tonight?
You're coming through now for once.
Good.
Not hollow. I can actually hear you.
Good, I want to make sure that we're good to go there. We had a thorough discussion on parental leave policy and providing some flexibility in how staff members could take advantage of that time, especially considering that some may not want to take all of their time in succession.
And some may have spouses that are able to take it at the beginning.
Right.
And this would be helpful for them.
Yes, so what we did is Susan and I and Jason and Steve met and talked with and got some information from Sandra, our town HR specialist that we utilized through Boz, to come up with some information, some different policy initiatives. How could we make this a little bit more flexible? What we came to is allowing there during the first 90 days after the event that would activate this policy, is that person would have the ability, either the six weeks for the mother or two weeks for the father, would have the ability to spread that time out over those 90 days, and they would have a five to seven day window in which they would need to notify their supervisor of that time off being taken. That way, they had some flexibility to use it, but there were some concerns from Boz about if we make the timeline too long, if we give them too much time, then it could be abused. So this is trying to balance those two initiatives. So what we have in front of us tonight is this amendment would, as I said, allow for that flexibility in the first 90 days after initiating events. So I just want to start the discussion and get back from the council members. How does that feel? Is that what we were looking for flexibility-wise? Were you hoping for more, less? Just some discussion tonight.
And speaking to a couple of department heads, they felt it would be easier for them if they could schedule shorter periods of time, too. So if an employee come and said, hey, I want to take a week here, then I'll be in for a couple of weeks, and I'll take a week there, it actually helps the department heads in their scheduling. So it actually makes it easier for them and easier to support it. So I'm in support of the change.
And it sounds like you're just saying they have the flexibility to use it, but it has to be used within 90 days.
Mm-hmm, yes.
It has to be done in one-week blocks, right? If that...
I believe it was full-day increments, correct?
Yeah, full-day increments.
Full-day.
And so that was something that...
But notified in advance, right?
It says seven days in advance if you can, is really what it says, or as much time as you can.
So this is something when I, just recently this year, took advantage of the state's parental leave policy. I had four weeks of time, and what was very beneficial was the ability to break that time up as needed, to where I would, you know, I took my first week, stayed home, you know, made sure that Ann and Mathias got home from the hospital okay, and from there, it was go back to work for a little bit, and then take that time in day increments or week increments as necessary to help support having our fourth child at home. And that was really helpful, having that flexibility, but it was four weeks over a six-month period. Now, I used mine within the first eight weeks of the program, so that's a situation where one of the reasons we limited it to the 90 days, you just had a baby, you just had a new foster child, you just had your adoption. I mean, you're going to want to take it that quickly. You're not going to want to take it nine, 12 months down the road, so...
I think it's great.
Okay. All right, any further discussion? There you are. Oh, wait, this one.
Ordinance 2019-03 and ordinance amending the Whitestown Employee Manual with respect to paid parental leave, first read. Mr. President, I make a motion that we suspend the rules and have second reading this evening.
I'll second that.
I've got a motion and a second, is there further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed nay, motion is adopted, four to zero.
Ordinance 2019-03 and ordinance amending the Whitestown Employee Manual with respect to paid parental leave. Mr. President, I make a motion we adopt ordinance 2019-03.
I've got a motion, is there a second?
Um, and does the public understand what we did here? I'm just trying to make sure that, you know, everyone understands we already had the parental leave, we approved it. We're just extending the amount of time that they can use to break it up a little bit.
All right, is that a second?
Yes.
All right, I've got a motion, I've got a second. Further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed nay, motion is adopted, four to zero. All right, moving on to new Item B, a discussion making the sledding hill and other amenities at Main Street Park handicap accessible. Nathan, come on up. Now Kevin, you asked for this to be placed on the agenda after we had a discussion back in October, I believe, was that correct?
Yes, and I actually had to apologize to the constituent that brought it up because I hadn't had it before now with us. But the constituent brought up the fact that the trails, the sledding hill is nice, and also, by the way, the water park, the splash pad and stuff is nice, but if you're handicapped, you can't use it. And that excludes some of our residents, and some of us, and I always say our residents have different abilities, not, or extra abilities, not disabled, but that they can't use it. As I understand, and Nathan has told me, there is at least one community that does have handicap accessible sledding, but that's over in Noblesville?
Fishers has, and it's, the access to the top of the hill is ADA accessible, but as the engineers have told me, they can't make the hill and the landing ADA accessible, so it's just giving ADA access to the top of the hill. So their thing was, it's just a very careful how it's saying, hey, your sled hill's ADA compatible, but it wouldn't be, because the hill itself wouldn't be, access to the top would be, and that's how they worded it there. And that's what we looked at through the design plans, is could we make that? And we had the plans done by the engineer, and that's where we were saying that, since it was an afterthought of adding that to the hill, it wasn't in the initial budget, so it was just a matter of if we do something like that, we need to look at where do we...
We need, we need to commit that we're going to have some additional funding for this, is what you're saying. It can be done, but it requires additional funding?
Yes.
Okay, and I think we should consider all our residents, not just those residents that it's easily available to, but to others that want to be able to use it. The constituent that brought it up to me, he's disabled, his child is not, but he would like to be able to bring his child up to the top of the hill to let him go down the sled. And not being able to get up there because he can't get up the front of that hill or whatever, it just, it makes it difficult. And I think we, as a town, should be very proactive in doing everything possible for all our residents, and we should commit. Now, I understand that we're going to have to look at funding, but we should commit first to trying to do it at all possible, and then, if possible, then, you know, look for you to see how to squeeze, look for the Town Manager to see how to squeeze, squeeze out the funding in order to make it, make it happen. And I think that would be a good commitment for us right now.
So Nathan, I have a question for you. You had mentioned that some engineers took a look at it. Do you have, how far into that process did the engineers get? Do we need to go back to them and get some hard numbers and some plans put together to even have an idea of how this would work, what the timeline would be, and what the cost would be before we can really go any further on this?
Now, we actually put plans together when we were looking at the access. After it was already bid out, I had the engineer go back when Mr. Russell reached out before about wanting to add it. Had them look into the design of what it would take. We don't have hard cost numbers. I called out after this, came back up as a topic to the developers who had won the bids and got numbers from them. It's about 7,000 cubic yards more dirt that we would have to find and bring to site, and 600 feet of, I think 640 feet of linear trail that we would add. Costs just for the mound addition and the trail were about $300,000.
Okay.
And there would also be changes to grading and drainage. Some things that they didn't look into added costs because it would wrap, instead of just being that site berm on the back, it would bring it around the side of the trail. Was the most cost efficient, the switchbacks weren't, because then you add in railing and other items. The easiest would be dirt and a straight 5% grade to the top, so to do it out asphalt. And then, they also didn't take into account the recurring costs if we do want to keep it as an ADA approach when we have rain or snow and ice that needs maintained. In that sense, and with it being on the slope, and with the grass, salt can't be used, you have to use the synthetic, which we use currently in our parks, but we're looking at going to brine for street side.
So it's, it's not impossible to do, but there is expenses, and as you said, you don't have the exact cost yet.
Correct, we don't have the exact cost. And when, the reason we didn't go forward with it initially was, one, that cost, and when we added the sled hill from the start was, we were looking, we're going to have this excess dirt, and it's, it's only 15 feet high, it's pretty much a glorified site berm. We were going to put an eight-foot berm anyway, so this just bumped it up, and we changed the grade of it to make it smoother, something little kids could use instead of going to Mulberry Hill, which is a little more dangerous for, say, a five-year-old. And it was just, in that process, it was trying to utilize the dirt from the site to create this, and yes, we could look at coming back and retrofitting and adding an ADA access to the top of the hill.
So I think it might be a positive here to go back with the developers, address those things that you've talked about that they didn't take into consideration, get us a full package, and you two work together on identifying potential funding streams and those types of things, so that all four, all five of us can, can make an informed decision. Would that be something you could get back to us on the February agenda, when we meet again on the 13th?
I can shoot for that date. We have, since we have contractors on site and they're awarded, we were at 4.2 on the site, so that should fall within the change order if it's in that, what, 10%, 20%? So yeah, we would fall, that's $800,000. I doubt it's going to be above that, so we could do it as a change order to the project if we find funding.
So I want, but I want you to go back, because when you're talking about some of the things that weren't considered, those are cost factors, I want to make sure that we're contemplating and considering when talking about this, which is why I was, I want you to go back, make sure you do a final pass with the developers, get us some hard numbers, some things that we can be assured on, that they've gone through every contingency that you're talking about, to get us on the same page, and then come back to us with, here's what it would cost, here's where we'd come up with the funding from it, so that we can then have that discussion in February and come to our final decision. Is that something you can...
I'm, I'm good with that, let's get, let's get to numbers, but I would like for us to look at this as, how can we make it happen versus, okay, this is going to cost too much. I'm not saying that it might not reach the point, we were going to say that it's not physically or financially possible, but we should, I, I would love to see us commit to figuring out how to make it happen versus just looking at it and saying it's not going to be financially possible.
And I can, I can shoot costs for both of, one, of to make the change order now and get it done, and two, if we, because they're under construction now, so it would need to be done now with the change order. But also the cost of, what's it, what would it take if we had to come back in six months a year?
And retrofit it.
And retrofit this. If we don't have the funding right now, if it is a few hundred thousand dollars, and we don't have the funding set, that way we could look at, at the end of the year, funds, trying to shift funds from this year and next year. But I can look, get both numbers, that way we can see that cost difference, because I'm sure it'll be a lot cheaper now to do it.
Because they're already in construction, they're already doing it, the hills open, and that's why I wanted to come back in the February meeting, which is our, you know, it's only, what, two weeks from tonight? I mean, it's going to be here rather quickly. So this gives us an opportunity to have all that information available, so we can look at it and make a decision on it.
Can you?
Sound good?
Yeah, that's what I was going to ask, if you could get us the difference, like you just said, of now or later, so we could, I mean, a few thousand dollars is not that much different, a hundred thousand dollars would be a big difference, so...
Now, one thing is that we've been focusing a lot on the sledding hill, and that's just one amenity at this park. Could you talk to us a little bit of some of the other amenities at the park and their accessibility for our residents?
Yeah, so the splash pad going in is, the surface is ADA, it's a concrete surface, so it will be ADA accessible. The playgrounds are all board-and-play surface, so they're hard surface. We have ground features that are in their ground play structures for sensory field and the various games that can be played on the playground at lower levels. The play structures themselves aren't, I mean, they can't climb the steps and so forth. There are some restrictions there, but we do have the play in it. We have a turf play area that's intended for kids that may have allergies or not be able to get in grass, that's going in on the back end, and it has some sensory play items in it. And then all the trails and pathways around the park are to ADA standard. There's a play field, but it's all graded fairly flat.
And were we getting the special swings also? Did you mention that?
Not, there weren't in this park. We were looking at those for when we redo Panther Park later this year.
Okay.
When we get to the splash pad, and I assume, and I'm speaking from ignorance on this, so I could be talking about it wrong, but will it be possible to have things like waterproof wheelchairs that somebody, that could be used by somebody, other ability of child, children if they wanted to get into it? Will we have those available for the kids?
We can look into those. I'd like to look into what parks, since this is an open park, it's not monitored. My concern would be how expensive and how often we're replacing due to kids playing and tearing them up that don't need them. I know that there are water parks out there that have them, but they're being checked out to be used. I can, I'd like to do some research and see how many places just take them out publicly.
Possibly set up some kind of locker system where a parent has, would have the need for it, that they could get a key, because they would be wanting to be responsible for it or something while it's out, and then lock it back up to make sure the child had it the next time around or something.
Yeah, I'd just like to do more research and see what is out there and what people have done that works.
I appreciate it, and that's a little further down the road, but I appreciate you being able to look at it.
Well Nathan, thank you for the work you're doing. As you just referenced, we're putting into our parks different structures, different features, so that we can meet the needs, the play needs of all the residents we have, of all the children regardless of age or abilities. I think you're doing some great work to make sure that everyone can utilize and enjoy our park facility, so I'm really looking forward to that, and I look forward to the discussion we're going to have next month on the sled hill, once you guys come back with that information. So thank you.
Thank you.
Further questions, comments, or concerns on the sled hill? Moving on to the next item of business is the discussed leadership transition. This is an update for the council at our last meeting, when we elected officers and then set up. Jason is the acting Town Manager. We had talked about that Susan and I were going to go back, and we're going to meet with Jason and Dax and come up with our transition plan. We have done that, we've worked with them. Dax has been giving a whole treasure trove of information that he has to the team, to the employees, so that they can continue the good work that he's doing, so we can continue moving forward. And what we wanted to do tonight was just to, to make sure that we're all on the same page, that just like when Dax had Jason as his number two, and that was the policy, that was what everyone knew, is that moving forward with Jason as the acting Town Manager, that we would have Nathan as his number two, and that he would be right there helping Jason work through all those things. So there's been reassignment of some organizations, some reporting structures, to make sure that we can level off who's dealing with what different pieces. The boards and commissions have been parsed out, all that's been rolled out to staff, and they're all working through that. So if you have any questions, you know, let me know, let Susan know, Jason, Nathan, everyone is here to help, so we can keep things moving on. So we just want to give everyone an update, so we're all on the same page. Any questions, comments, concerns on that particular item? All right, that brings us to the last item on our new business agenda, considering ordinance amending zoning maps within the ordinance, zoning ordinance, trailside PUD. So this harkens back to my Plan Commission days, so what we're going to do is we're going to start off with the petitioner. They are going to give their presentation, and then I'm going to transition to those that have signed up to speak in opposition to the petition, those neutral on the petition, then those in favor of the petition, and then the petitioner will have a chance to rebuttal. After that, we'll move into discussion of the council, and then will be council. Everyone okay with that?
How long do they have to speak?
Petitioner will have between five and seven minutes, and then each resident will have their five minutes to say their piece, and then rebuttal will be limited to five minutes. Would you mind keeping track for me? Thank you. So petitioner, please step forward.
Thank you.
Like I said, Susan is going to be on the clock for your seven minutes.
Can I get set up before you start the clock, please?
Of course.
Sorry. Have a key? Okay. Yeah. There you go.
Mr. President, members of the Town Council, thank you for hearing our case. My name is Brian Tuie, I represent...
Before you start, we all have this on page six, that, so it might be worth it to turn it around so that the public can see it?
Thank you.
Because we do have this, we can look at it that way.
My name's Brian Tuie, and I am here representing Westport. Here with me tonight is Matt Dunn of Westport Homes, the Vice President, actually the President of this division area, Chris McKinney of Westport Homes, and Rick Ellis, our engineer from Y Engineers. Thank you for hearing our case. We have a PowerPoint presentation, which I would appreciate if someone would put up on the screen. I think it's been loaded in the machine, and perhaps, perhaps Dax can assist with that PowerPoint.
Oh, sure. Thank you.
So while he's assisting with that, which I greatly appreciate, this site is a 189-acre site, and it's shown here, and Rick, what the plan, or council member suggests is we might show that to the audience. It is on the west side of 650, and it's north of the Old Town Center. And the property is owned by Donald Virginia Clark and Brent Smith. And Westport, who by the way, is the developer of Westwood Landing, which is just south of town, south of the rec site on Indianapolis Road, is the same developer, proposed developer of this site. And they would propose to build a mixed-use development that would have single-family homes, cottage homes, and town homes. And the overall density of that development would be about 3.1 homes per acre. And in the Whitestown Comprehensive Plan, a density of 3.1, actually 3.14 if you take it out, another decimal, would translate to what the Whitestown Comprehensive Plan would call low-density residential development. And the idea, members of the council, is to have a community that would provide housing for really all ranges of home buyers, from young adults to young families being formed, thank you, to perhaps even 55 and older citizens like myself, that might not want a yard to maintain anymore, but want to perhaps leave in Indiana winter. And so the three types of housing that they have, there, perfect. Thank you so much. How do I move with this? Thank you very much. That's great. I couldn't do anything more complicated than that, anyway. So here's our site. So it's north of the Old Town Center, as I said, it's 189 acres, north of Pier Street. What this site has, has many things going for it, one of the great advantages to Westport is that it's very close to the Old Town Center, and it sits squarely on that Big Four Trail. That's, that is a tremendous amenity to young folks, and you can see it in Indianapolis, you can see it in Carmel, you can see it in Westfield. People want to live on these pedestrian trails, these old railroad corridors, and this site has a significant amount of frontage on it. One thing that has changed significantly since we were before the Plan Commission, which on a 5-0 unanimous vote recommended this for approval, we heard from neighbors, and we heard from the Vice President, Councilor Austin, that there was a concern that we had a connection to Uwet Street, and we did. We had, we, we believe Uwet would be a good idea to connect to the southern end of this subdivision. After meeting with the counselor and listening to the neighbors, we've eliminated that, and I've submitted a commitment to the counselor that takes out that. So we no longer have an entrance to Uwet Street, we'll have an entrance, another entrance off of 650. The, we've, and if I could play this, I would, we've created a video that's, it's like a flyover of this, and Dex, and...
That's your video.
That's our video? I don't want to just show them a blank screen, I might not think it's much of a video.
You want, you want to play this?
Please.
How long is the video?
It's two minutes.
You have 2:44.
Yeah, you've got 2:44 left.
Then, maybe I'll play the video and talk at the same time.
Minute.
What do you want?
No, maybe we better not. Okay, I'll, I'll wrap it, I'll wrap it with 2 minutes and 44 seconds.
The video does kind of show the whole project, right?
It does, but...
You kind of, he could essentially eliminate a lot of this...
Why don't you do your wrap-up, play the video, and then we'll let those opposed to the petition go.
Okay, okay, thank you very much, Mr. President. So the types of homes we would propose to build would range in price from the high $200,000 to the mid $300,000. And that would be at the top level. At the lower level, for our town homes, we'd be from right under $200,000 to about the mid $200,000. So we would be in the $195,000 range to the $350,000 range. And to give an example, our homes in Westwood, which these would be very similar to our single-family homes, they average about $359,000, because people add options to them. The community would have about 25%, actually more than 25% of open space, so there would be recreational space, there'd be parks, there'd be trails, walking trails, that would come from the community, connect to the Big Four Trail, and then be able to walk or bike ride into the Old Town Center. That's a key element to this development. Another commitment that Vice President Austin asked us to make, which we agreed to do, would be to extend a sidewalk along the north side of Uwet Street. Even though we're not going to have a connection point, we would put a sidewalk in, again, to create that walkability. Councilor Austin also asked us to add additional green space when we go through our Plan Commission approval for the detailed development plan in both the northwest corner and the southeast corner, and to work with the Parks Department to where that particular green space would go, and we said we would do that. We made four additional commitments. We also said that we would improve County Route 650 along our frontage to allow traffic to enter in and out of our subdivision without impeding traffic on 650. To sum up our petition, the Whitestown Comprehensive Plan from the staff report indicates that Whitestown should promote unique design and residential densities that provide market-driven product types that are attractive to individuals and families in all phases of life, especially young professionals and families. We think we meet those tenets, those four or five tenets as set forth in the staff report. The Plan Commission recommended approval, and with that, I'll close and play our brief video. And thank you for your time tonight.
Made one of the top 10 best places to buy a home and raise a family, Whitestown is the fastest-growing community in Indiana for six years running, and Westport Homes is one of the fastest-growing builders in the Midwest. A progressive and diverse community, Whitestown honors its history while looking to the future. Westport Homes wants to be a part of Whitestown's future. Introducing, Trailside, a multi-year phased project. Trailside will ultimately bring premier homes, cottage homes, and upscale town homes, surrounded by parks, playgrounds, ponds, and other amenities, along with a multi-use trail, wider boulevard-style streets, and many other infrastructure improvements. Westport Homes is a respected builder in the Midwest, committed to quality, service, and sustainable building practices.
So my name is Jessica Avery, and I've owned LA Cafe for a little over seven years now. We are really excited for the growth that's happening in Whitestown to get us lots of more new customers, and for... more new customers and for the people that love your little local small businesses like us.
I'm Aaron Miller. I own Whitestown Pizza. As Whitestown continues to grow, we continue, of course, to see more and more patrons, which is awesome. As things start to develop north of town, we have more people coming through the Legacy Core to get to the bigger shops and to 65. That exposure is going to be, it's going to be phenomenal.
New homes mean jobs. According to the National Association of Home Builders, building just 100 new homes creates nearly 400 jobs. New homes mean thriving local business as neighbors support neighbors and families put down roots. Westport Homes is committed to being a good neighbor and would like to be a part of the future of Whitestown as Trailside gradually comes to life. Trailside by Westport Homes. For families, for growth, for Whitestown.
Thank you for your time.
Thank you very much. All right, so I've got three folks signed up to speak. So when I call your name, let me know if you are in opposition, neutral, or if you support, so I can make sure you talk at the correct time. I've got Matt Cantrell.
Neutral.
Neutral, all right. Pat Howenstein. Did I get it right?
Opposed.
Opposed, all right. And Cecilia Fulmer.
Neutral and opposed.
All right, then let's start with Pat and move on. If you could please come to the microphone. Like we said, just give us your name, address, just so everyone can hear, and then you'll have five minutes for your case.
Okay. Pat Howenstein, address is 2587 South, 650 East, across the road from this development. To begin with, keep the zoning as-is, which was done 2015, not that long ago. Somebody knew what was supposed to have been done. Keep northern part of Whitestown rural. You've already pushed the south part into the urban, the extension of Indianapolis, of White Fishers, all the other little crowded communities. Keep north of true Whitestown rural. If anything, the developer wants to follow the rules, rural residential, less than one to two homes per acre. That probably wouldn't be, I wouldn't oppose it as much. Any developer that comes in, Westport, whoever, needs to follow the rules. Quit changing Whitestown. If they loved it so much as a rural community, a family community, go by the rules, keep us as-is. That's what we always wanted, we fought for several years ago. So that's why we're there. Some of us has been there for 40-plus years. Why? Because we didn't want to be in Indianapolis. We did not want to be in a subdivision. We wanted the rural living. Young families have moved along 650, have now had children there. They did it for a reason. They wanted the rural living. They have invested thousands of dollars in backyards to create their own playground. They're outside playing. The families are playing together in the rural setting. They have gardens. They want to have organic food. They want that to stay rural. We should have the protection of the town council, since you have included us in the town now. We should have the protection to keep our lifestyle, what we have had for at least 40 years, some 60 years, some 15 years, but it was before all this started developing. We are concerned about traffic. This amendment to have two entrances to the subdivision on 650 is a safety issue with accidents waiting to happen. We have children get on and off bus on 650. They are right in front of their house. We've had traffic that does not obey the 40-mile in our zone. If they obeyed it, we'd probably be pretty good shape, but they don't. So having two entrances with all of these cars coming in and out, in the morning going to work, they are not going to want to stop for school buses. That patience is not there for people anymore. We have to walk across the road to get to our mailbox. It's not easy now. I know there was study was done by Westport, for Westport, on a traffic study, which I think must have been during fall break, when people are on vacation, no school buses or anything. There is traffic on that road now. You go to the mailbox, you have to stand behind the mailbox because people are whizzing by. They don't go 40. They do not go 40. So increasing the traffic on that road with that number of houses, get it back down to rural residential. The ongoing issues we've had is flooding, and that has yet to be proven that anything is taken care of by these developments, improving their land for existing people in other area. If you can look at that across the road from this Main Street Park, his yard's still flooding, his fields are still flooding, and that's supposedly across the road, and interstructure is already done. So it's not happening. Can't say that our flooding is going to be handled once they start breaking in field tile with these big machinery going over it. We're going to have increased construction debris, dust, dirt pollution, sound pollution, light pollution, all of that when we want a rural, living environment. If you could only show us the courtesy that you have showed the developer to us existing residents, and listen to what we're saying, if we have to have an informal meeting with you, we'll do it. And let us know, let you know what we're thinking. You can tell us what might be done, what might not be done, but we have desired that area and have created a Whitestown that others want to come because we are a rural, family environment. Keep it rural, north of town.
Thank you for your comments. Next, Cecilia. As a opposed slash neutral.
Yes, I'm neutral opposed.
Okay.
Okay. My name is Cecilia Fulmer, and I live at 102 West Pierce, and my garage sits on Uwet. I heard that they're going to make that like a fire lane. That's fantastic. The kids play back there. They cannot play on Pierce because of the speeding traffic. They do come across, sometimes come up over on the sidewalks. They do not stop for the school buses, I agree. Coming up here tonight, it was like bumper-to-bumper going to the Indianapolis 500 on traffic. It is ridiculous. And some of these companies, businesses that talk, I don't think they realize they're going to lose, if they widen 650, they're going to lose their parking lots and probably their business because there's a six-foot easement, isn't there, on a road? They're going to lose, it's going to go right through the White Stallion, right through the middle of her restaurant if they widen the road. I'm opposed to that because my backyard will look at the houses. I've talked to a realtor about selling my home. She says more likely I will not get any money since a development is going in behind me. I moved out of Indianapolis to get away from shootings, people shooting guns up in the air to mark their territory. I work for Indianapolis Public Schools. I know what is in Indianapolis. It scares me. We moved up here to get my kids out of Indianapolis Public Schools. It needs to be kept rural. Thank you.
Thank you.
Also, one more thing. I want to know the date and the time that the traffic study was done because there is no way that that traffic study is correct. Thank you.
Thank you. Matt Cantrell, neutral?
Members of the council, thank you for hearing my comments. My name is Matt Cantrell, and I live at 203 Uwet Street, bordering the southern edge of the proposed Trailside development. On behalf of my family, and not only as a resident, but a business owner that is affected by this development, I'd like to express thanks to the council for pushing the developer to improve and beautify the development. I am pleased to hear about the concessions presented tonight. I would like to request that the town continue to press for further concessions and reassurances before the final plans are approved. Specifically, I am concerned, as others are, about the traffic load on Main Street, and for myself specifically, especially possible drainage ramifications on neighboring households. Thank you.
Thank you. That's the end of the forms I received. Is there anyone that wants to fill out a form and speak in opposition to the petition? Anyone neutral to petition? Anyone in favor of the petition? All right, we'll move on to rebuttal by the petitioner. And you'll get five minutes.
Thank you, Mr. President. Members of the council, again, thank you for your time. To address the comments, the first comment that I would address is, when was the traffic study done? The traffic study was done in October of 2018, over typical weekdays between 6:30 a.m. and 8:30 a.m., and also between 4:00 p.m. and 7:00 p.m. The idea was to catch both morning traffic and evening traffic, and so that's in October.
Do you have the dates in October?
I can, yes, I have the date of the traffic study was... I'm sorry, I have October 2018, and I don't have the exact day other than it was, wait, I'm sorry, I do. October 17th was one day, both the a.m. and the p.m. So I don't know if that was fall break. Yeah, that's, this is the traffic count on October 17th, both at the morning times, the two hours, and the evening times, the two hours.
So just one day?
Yes, that's the day I can find right now. The traffic study's fairly thick, but that's the day I can come up with right this second.
Thank you.
The additional comment from the folks that spoke was that this area is rural residential, and that is true. But members of the Plan Commission, the Comprehensive Plan had several goals, and the staff, the planning staff outlined them at our hearing in their staff report. One of those was that Whitestown's goal, desire was to create homes that would serve both an urban and a suburban lifestyle, and that homes would appeal to families both of new-form families, middle-aged families, and elderly families. And another goal was to promote pedestrian circulation, walking trails, cycling, things like that, and link pedestrian circulation to the downtown area. We believe respectfully that this community does all that. It serves both folks that are, would be starting off new families, it would serve folks that maybe are singles and don't have families, and would also serve folks that would have growing families in the single-family residential. The average sales price of these homes will be considerably greater than the homes along Uwet Street. That doesn't make them better by any stretch of the imagination, but one comment I heard was it might devalue our property. I would respectfully disagree with that. If the homes at Westwood Landing are average sales price of $359,000, and the homes that border our property are in the $150,000 kind of range, I believe that logically those homes will also gain in value from our development. The last comment, or another comment, was about flooding. If you look at that site plan, there are five ponds on that site plan. And so we will be required by the town of Whitestown to design our drainage with the utility department so that we don't increase flooding off-site. And any tiles that we break, we will have to address in our onsite flooding. So I suspect that this will actually be of benefit to the surrounding community in terms of reducing flooding on this site. In summary, this is a multi-generational, several-year development, which will bring quite a diverse residential community to the north end of town. It's got a terrific location and a terrific asset in that it sits on that Big Four Trail, and we think it meets the goals of the Comprehensive Plan, and I believe the Planning Department agreed with us, and I believe the Plan Commission did, as evidenced by their unanimous vote to recommend approval. And the last comment I would say is that we still have to go through a detailed development plan approval. This is only for the rezoning. So when we get into issues like flooding and how the accesses will work off 650, all that will come out before the Plan Commission. Thank you again for your time this evening.
Thank you. Questions from the council for the petitioner before we get into council discussion?
Okay, I've got a few for you. One is, what are all the red dots on that? You have a number of red dots around the edges and stuff. I've been able to summarize.
These are trees that are, they're just different kinds of trees that would be planted. There will be thousands of trees planted. We tried to show the different kinds.
You're just indicating the type of trees going in there.
Yes.
All right. I understand that you haven't got a final plot plan or anything.
Yes, sir.
But what was the justification for putting the townhomes south versus putting the cottage homes there next to what would be the Legacy Core, current cottage homes? You know, where you'd match them. Why did you transition to the townhomes versus cottage homes right there?
And I might let Matt Dunn answer that from Westport, since he was involved in the design of that.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen of the town council. My name is Matt Dunn, 9210 North Meridian Street. I'm the division president for Westport Homes. So in terms of laying out the site, we took the approach of trying to group the highest density use, the townhomes, close to the trail. It's closer to what I would call the Legacy Core area, which is a higher-density area. And then as we moved north away from that town center, we were transitioning to a less dense use in the cottage homes, and then finally the single-family, which is the least dense.
Okay. Because the cottage homes, to me at least, look like very similar to what's on Legacy Core right now. And it would have been nice, in my opinion, and I'm just one, but it would have been nice, in my opinion, to show the cottage homes as a nice transition. But you're going to have access to the Big Four Trail? It's not quite shown on this very well, but you can have access to the Big Four Trail for all the residents in this subdivision?
Correct. There'll be at least two trail connections, one in kind of the southwest corner and one in the southeast corner. Again, the actual location of those will be worked out through the detailed development plan, but yeah, we do plan to have direct access to that trail to provide good pedestrian connectivity for the residents as well as other members of the community.
The question came up as far as drainage. Now on 650, you're going to be adding drainage as well, additional drainage up in that area if you put this in?
Yes. As recommended by the traffic study, there will be improvements that need to be made along 650 turn lanes and passing blisters. We would be making drainage improvements as part of those. There's quite a bit of conversation going on with respect to this property and the drainage considerations. So our engineers and members of the town have been working very closely, and will continue to do so through the detailed development plan. But yeah, we know that there are some drainage concerns in the area, and we're ready to try to work through those as part of this development.
Thank you. I have questions for Dax and Jason, but I don't know if you want to ask the developer anything before we go.
I want to make sure that there are no other questions from council members for the petitioner, so we can leave the petitioners back to their chairs.
Just that if you could provide the dates for the entire traffic study, that would be nice to compare it against the fall break.
Yes, so I did just check. The traffic study was conducted, the traffic counts were taken on October 18th, which was a Wednesday in October. Lebanon School System was on fall break the following week. This is in the Lebanon School area, so it would have been the week prior to the Lebanon School break.
Yeah. Thank you for confirming that.
All right. One final question. I forgot. One final question, I forgot. What's your anticipated, if this gets approved, what's your anticipated, how many homes per year were you anticipating putting in?
It's probably a seven-to-10-year project. So somewhere between 50 on the lower end and 70 or 80 on the higher end.
Thank you.
All right. Thank you very much. All right. As far as council discussion goes, Councilman Russell, you asked to talk with outgoing and acting town managers, so...
Only because of outgoing, you may be more aware, even though Jason is actually public works as well.
He's having a lot of fun saying that tonight.
My question has to do with the concerns that have been brought up about traffic. And that's what I have heard from constituents as well. It's not so much the subdivision, it's the traffic on Main Street. What is the anticipation on widening Main Street and improving Main Street?
So we've talked to multiple different engineers about this, Jason and I both. We have it down to a three-phase project. So from Schooler Drive to essentially Boone Meadows School, because then you get into having to cooperate with the county to go over Fishback Creek. Phase two would be from County Road 500 South to Albert S. White. The last phase would be from Albert S. White all the way to 200 South. The engineers did not recommend a widening, if you will. You don't want a Hazel Dell Parkway at all. What you want is probably a little bit wider lanes with designated left turns, median with designated left turns. That way, you're safely passing someone who wants to make a left and you're keeping traffic flow moving with a roundabout at Albert S. White and Main Street. So you wouldn't see a big widening of Main Street because we don't want it to be a racetrack. We have very good north-south access with the interstate with 267. Main Street would then be a kind of a residential north-south access. It wouldn't encourage fast travel. It would encourage safe travel to the subdivisions and then obviously to the commercial that would exist around Albert S. White and the commercial that would obviously exist in Legacy Core. That phased project right now is, I think it was about $16 million? Phased over a seven-year period. So $16 million phased over a seven-year period. We get us to where we go. That does not include any improvements over Fishback Creek with the bridge there. That adds substantial amount of money. Like I said, it's not in our jurisdiction. We would obviously have to cooperate with the county because it's in rural Zionville. So when we're talking about traffic, I know that people like to get up here and decry traffic as a problem with growth. Yes, you bring more people in. Yes, you're going to have more cars. Yes, you're going to have to put in the infrastructure necessary to get those cars from A to B safely and efficiently. We've done a very good job of staying ahead of highway infrastructure in this town. You cannot deny it. Done a very good job of that. And we think in the planning that we have with, you just paid for a transportation plan. It's very good. It's a very good plan. That this phased project of Main Street will certainly fit with these types of projects that bring in this type of product. We hear it all the time that we don't want to be like Fishers. Fishers trouble is you're east-west in Fishers. It's hard to go north-south. There's 116th Street used to be it. And that's where your Fisher's bottleneck was. Very poor infrastructure. We are lucky to have Whitestown Parkway. We're blessed to have Albert S. White Drive. We're blessed to have 267. We're blessed to have Indianapolis Road. We're blessed to have Main Street. We're not, we're not going to become necessarily that Fishers because of planning and because of the infrastructure that we already had, not to mention a third interchange being built with access to it east-west. So we're going to be sitting in pretty good shape when you add more people. But if you're doing what we designed this to do in the comp plan, we want those people to leave in the morning, go to work, come back at night and park their car, get out of their cars and walk to the businesses in the Legacy Core and hopefully, for God's sake, let's get that trail down Main Street to get people to be able to walk and bike down to Hanson. And then they don't have to drive while they're here. They're only driving to get to their access point to wherever they're going to work. And if we keep attracting the businesses that like, the industry that we've attracted, which are pretty high wages, a lot of people won't even have to drive to go to work. They could, they could walk to go to work. A PTS, which is being built, $42.95 an hour is the average wage at PTS. Plans are in place and going pretty well. So you know I couldn't get up here and not give you a long-winded answer in my last council meeting about traffic and about the development in general.
If we take his high-end numbers of 70 per year, assuming that the houses would really start selling next year, this year would be turning dirt and getting a subdivision. So we're looking at probably 2022 for about 140 additional houses. Will our Main Street be able to handle that at that point? Say down to 267, Albert S. White?
Yes, from what our traffic engineers have told us, Main Street will be able to handle that traffic. Will you get a bottleneck at the stop sign at Pearson Main? Yeah, it's not going to be like it used to be. Will that bottleneck be, take you 30 seconds longer to get through the intersection? Possibly.
Slow traffic down too, right?
For everybody that's worried about speedy traffic right now, yes, to answer your question, that slows traffic down. It may slow you down to get to where you anticipated going in a hurry, but yes, it slows traffic down. The point and the reason why we like this development was the townhomes on the trail is perfect. When this rail bed was existing as a live rail, buildings were built all down in rows, just like row houses, all down the rail because that was the economy. That was the economy of the town. You put townhouses in there, people are looking out at the trail and then the cottage-style homes, which kind of mirror what was built back in the 1900s in the Legacy Core area. We thought this was a good project to bring people to the Legacy Core area because we hear all the time, why has the town neglected the Legacy Core? Why aren't you revitalizing it? And I always have to tell people, number one, the town doesn't own it. We own very little in the Legacy Core. The town did not cause its economic collapse. The economy did, the free-market economy did. When you bring people in, you have the ability to bring businesses back in and have those businesses survive because you have more people to support them. And so we think, we thought this was a good development to do that. Rising tides raise all ships. You've got houses in Legacy Core now that were worth $40,000 in 2006 that are worth $150,000 now. So that rising tide is coming.
Thank you. If anybody else does have any questions for him? I have one for Dennis.
Any questions for Dax or Jason?
Dennis, we have heard an awful lot about the saying that they're speeding and passing school buses and driving on sidewalks and everything down in the Legacy Core. What is your experience with that and what can we do to prevent that?
Well, some of these things are some of the first that I've heard tonight about driving on sidewalks. We have a program in place with Lebanon Schools. I think everybody now knows that Lebanon Schools have stop-arm cameras on their buses. That information is passed along to us through the partnership that we have. Our officers routinely follow the buses on their routes through the Legacy Core, through Walker Farms, through Harvest Park. We're not seeing the level of violations that's being described here tonight. We'll continue to do that. We're diligent about doing that. But I would certainly think that if the numbers were there based on what was spoken here tonight, we'd have a lot more video evidence from the stop-arm cameras to help back that up.
Thank you.
Chief, I just want to say thank you to your officers. I've noticed, you know, in the past two or three months, I mean, they've been following the buses through Walker Farms.
That's good to know. We want people to notice. The school bus drivers are noticing. I get a lot of comments through our social media where the people in the community are noticing and so I appreciate that. I'll pass that on. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, chief. As we move into council discussion, I'm going to defer to Vice President Austin as this is both in her district and she's been working with the petitioner on some of these things to start off our discussion, so.
Well, I appreciate the fact that the petitioner was so willing to sit and talk and talk through the concerns that we had that we could easily identify and that they were open to discussing as they move through the primary plat process, being cognizant of the issues that the residents have and the needs of the existing residents for the new thing. This is, this project has, from what I've seen from the Westport Homes themselves, is a very good quality product. And that's something that we desired for our neighborhoods all through in any, in any one of our subdivisions. One of our goals has been walkability. This is, this follows the walkability within the comprehensive plan and it helps, kind of brings some, some of the old-town flair back of lining, like Dax said, lining along the Big Four Trail. Many of the homes in Whitestown were actually moved off the Big Four Trail and have been relocated within parcels in the town so that they may not be where they originally were. They were along their trail. So it brings back some of that historical, even if it's a new product, but it brings back some of that history of what the town was and its relevance to being a rail town. As I mentioned to him, I love green space. I love lots of green space. And you millennials, I don't understand why you don't want to cut grass. I love it. I just don't get it. But overall, I think, I think it's a good project and I look forward to being there every step of the way as this progresses.
Okay. Thank you. Further discussion from the council?
Just that the Historical Preservation Committee, I believe, is in support of the changes that were discussed, which I think is important as well.
It's a fair point. They did supply us with that support letter via email over the past couple of days.
I just want to say thank you to Vice President Austin for all of her work on this. I think we've got a pretty good product compared to this. Thank you.
I would echo those sentiments and encourage the petitioner to continue to work with, work with the neighbors and the community at large if this were to move forward upon this vote tonight. That would be my comments to add. I do appreciate the product. I can't really say more than what Vice President Austin said. Those are things that we were working for when we were putting together the comprehensive plan, seeing the trail being utilized like this, connected like this. And to see this type of product come into the Legacy Core area, I think is a positive, so. Ordinance number 2019-02, an ordinance amending zoning maps within the zoning ordinance of the Town of Whitestown, Indiana, zoning map amendment PC 18-045ZA. I will offer the motion to approve ordinance number 2019-02.
Second.
Since this is a zoning ordinance, it is not a correct. Sorry. All right, I've got a motion and a second. Is there further discussion before the vote is taken? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay.
I would defer to spokesman Austin at her district and I would say yea because she had said yea.
All right. That gives me five to zero in favor. Motion is adopted. Thank you everyone that came tonight.
Thank you.
Moving on to the next item of business, we have other business. A public farewell to town manager, Dax Norton.
Everybody want to come in who's outside?
Mr. Norton? Come on up. Is there another Mr. Norton hanging out back there?
That's the framed resolution from last.
We've got a nice little framed resolution from last meeting for you right here.
And although we didn't get a year-end annual report...
We did not.
We did not. We decided that we'd make you come back and give it at some point. And to make sure that you do that, we are going to present you with the very first key to the town to Dax Norton. Let him make his way. Let him make his way through.
All right.
And as you so aptly showed with your fun at Moon Town, I know our perks department has a little special thing for you too.
So since you love to approve us and help make it happen, do the other ones. It's to all-access badge to all town units.
I do. If I recall correctly from the prior meeting, you were at a loss for words, surprising as it may be, and you requested some time to publicly say goodbye.
I did. Although the video evidence shows that, I guess I really did that. But I said, I guess I did that. I just didn't do it in a 10-minute fashion last time. Which I know you love. I know you love prolonged speeches. I think there are a lot of, my wife is here. You got my wife out. She is out and in the public tonight, which is unusual. So thank you, honey. Appreciate that. There are friends here and there's family here. I think multiple times I called it our staff family, multiple posts, because you all were family. We argued like family. We had our moments of not liking each other like family. We had our moments of hugging like family. That's the nature of politics and the nature of government and the nature of local government. But this family was close enough and to do, I didn't do that. That was a group of people that came together and did an amazing thing, starting with the residents who elected you all and then you all and then, you know, it kind of trickles down from there. So thanks for your leadership. Employees, staff family, thank you much. I have a stack of boxes in my office of thank you notes. And I was going to write a thank you note to everybody. Hang on, I'm going to turn around.
Go write it out.
It's, these people don't need to hear me anymore. I can't print, right? And I definitely can't write in cursive. So I got frustrated and Jason is going to send you all thank you notes. And I know he's a man of many words, especially loving words, so I can't wait to see what kind of thank you notes you get. From the fire department, to the police department, to the utility department, to town administrative staff, to the parks department. Did I miss anybody? I don't think I missed anybody. I can't thank you enough for what a fun, I keep saying ride. It was a great ride. You let me break your horn and your siren, FD. Chief, I never went to Evo. I should have. Maybe I could have broken a police car too. But last, when I remember getting here, you guys were in two closets in Cozy. And now we're building a $3.5 million police station. And I couldn't be more proud of that. You all were in one station over at 71's and we kind of, we kind of made a makeshift station You all were in one station over at 71's and we kind of made a makeshift station out of an old town hall slash auto body shop. And now we're building a headquarters station over in the rec site. I couldn't be more proud of that. Nathan, how many acres of parks did we have prior to what we're building now?
Thirteen.
Thirteen acres of park and one was really kind of a pseudo park that was given to us by Neighbor Association because they didn't want to take care of the land, am I right? That left us with Panther. Hancock's aren't here. We always tried to steal Lyons Park, we didn't get it done. Now we're building Main Street Park, we're building Anson Park, Meyer Commons with the proposed wellness campus, Little League. It's been a great run there. Tanya, where are you? I don't know why, it was Tanya and I for a while, really. Jason was DPW Director and he was kind of doing the outside stuff. And Tanya was, she was an Assistant Town Manager, that was her original title, we didn't know what that meant. Communications, I think is what we called it. We then got together and created the PR Department. Now it's kind of come full circle, she's back to Acting Assistant Town Manager of Communications and Public Relations. And well deserved, because all the information, and we always hear this all the time, I think there was a Santelli guy who, he looked up to us, and he should. Tom Santelli should look up to us. I hope he continues to do so in his new role. He always said that we always got information, we're always getting all this information out, and we're very good about being transparent and responsive. And that has a little bit to do with me, because I'm crazy enough to be up at 1:00 in the morning explaining to people how Economics 101 and capitalism works in our country. And yes, we can have 55 nail salons if they so choose to open up. But it was really Tanya. She built that, she built the PR and I've told her Economic Development's a team effort from Nathan and Jason and myself and the council, but Tanya's telling the story, so remember that. This story in 2013, I think it was neutral and negative, right? We kind of did a branding project. Tanya came up with the Whitestown Proud. She came up with, she loves Twitter, so please tweet her as much as you can, because if that tweet can get on TV, man, she really loves that even more. But she developed all that from nothing, and then kind of pushed me to make the website better. I think all of you pushed me to do it as well, but we occasionally listen to them when they showed up. So Tanya, thanks, I know you'll continue to move forward and make it even better now that I'm out of your way. I really didn't have a structure for this. I teared up a little bit in the video, and I do that from time to time. I was sitting in that office today and we were cleaning it out, and I had a moment to sit in here alone, lights off, sun shining in the, well, the rain shining in the windows. And cannot believe what we've all done in such a short amount of time. I don't want to leave Matt out, I don't want to leave Amanda out. The Kirk Treasures that I worked with in this building, they've done a great job. You go back to our way past audits and, you know, financials and organization in that department, it pales, that's nothing to what we have now. So Matt, thanks. I know we didn't spend a lot of time together. I know the Kirk Treasures offices, it's not the jump up and down, sometimes you don't get enough credit. You probably get more sneers and jeers than you do praise, because sometimes you're the no office and sometimes you're the, we got to wait to do that office. But you're the organizing of the finances and you both did a good, a great job, it's a pleasure to work with you both. And Amanda, I'm glad you're here tonight. So let me, I guess I'll just go down real quickly to the department leaders. I don't want to leave employees out, but Josh, thank you. You were here before me, we got our contract signed on the same year, just a few months apart. We survived, we need a t-shirt. I got a key. Who knows what you'll get? It's been a great time advocating for the public safety teams and raising your budgets and seeing it grow and seeing us go from part-time, I know we're still doing this, to full-time, having our staff increase and the FD staff be proud. Kelly tells me that we're still going to be making Christmas Eve dinner for you all. Now, I said we. All I did was make the mashed potatoes and that's easy. So we're still going to continue that tradition, and we think it's a good one. And that applies to the PD, because we always invite them over as well. Dennis? I remember 2008, when I was the Economic Development Director, and the Whitestown Metropolitan Police Department was just coming in line, right? And you talk about leadership and growth and where you've taken the department from the Town Marshal days, we all know how the Town Marshal and the blinking flashlight in the legacy core, to what we are today. Thank you. You've been a mentor as well to me from time to time. We were people we could vent with each other, bounce ideas off of each other, yell at each other in the hallway if we had to, hug right after and make up. But what an amazing department, Scott, everybody else. You guys should be so incredibly proud of where we've come. I know I am, and I think the residents are as well. Brittany, you're in trouble. Woo-hoo. For those of you that don't know, that's Brittany's morning greeting, although it's usually like this. We took a calculated risk on putting somebody in an office who had a desire to do what you're doing, and to educate yourself even more to do what you're doing, even at a higher level than you are to do it. And you did not let any of us down. And I could not be more proud of what you've done, who you've become in the planning office, and you and Carla both. I think you've proven to the residents of the town that you can do this job and you've done it very well, dedicated, incredibly dedicated. And so, thank you for sticking that out, thank you for getting thrown into the fire with little complaint. Woo-hoo. What's your other one, what'd you tell me today? It's either woo-hoo or...
Yay.
But the planning department is only 2015, so 2015 was no, 2016 was when we, 2015 is when we started the planning department. So, three years old, right? You were assistant for a very short amount of time and a lot of people would have buckled under that pressure and you didn't, so thank you very much, it's a pleasure to work with you. Dave?
Why do you laugh?
Well, I laugh for this one reason, I'm looking at the walls, I don't know if I should say this, I will. So, I got two days left?
Maybe.
For the moment.
Huh?
Maybe.
Well, actually, that'd be fine, because Jason can start his duties. I'm looking at these walls and Dave is the Building Department Manager now. He worked under our first planner, Lauren. He needs a t-shirt for I survived that. No, I'm just kidding, we love him. My wife is leaving. Oh, well. She does that. But as I'm looking at these walls and I'm thinking of the department, if you go up to the Building Department Office, it's, for some reason, these muddy guys who, all they do all day is tell people no, you don't know how to build your buildings, have the nicest office in the building. And Dave, I guess that's you. But what makes me laugh about, is as I look at these walls and I think that walls are built with studs, right? So one day, we're building a wall down in this end of the building, and Dave walks by and says, "Oh, I see that you've got a bunch of metal daves to put up today." Are we getting, did we catch that? Metal daves. So from here on out, every time that we would want to go find a stud in the wall, the Building Department Manager would say, "Do you need a dave finder?" So, a lot of comic relief. You have built an amazing department with amazing staff. Imagine if you will, all the building that's going on here and five people, four people, sorry, are inspecting all of that with Shannon.
Don't break your key.
As if I break it. Shannon came on board this year as, I guess you're really the one probably, keeping that all in check, right? But your staff is great. I see a couple, I see they're here, a couple members are here tonight, so thanks for building the department that you built. And we're 71 babies, so is Tanya, Tanya's a 71 baby, there's, you know, so we have a club there too, so. Nate? Parks Department, Parks Board President was what you were, I believe, when I started? Yes? You threw me under the bus and made me run the Grand Prix one year. Thank you. I appreciate that, really, really do. I'll never forget that pain at all. And then, we hired our first Parks Director, and I knew that the best person for the job was close by when that person left. It was my fault, I always blame myself for him not getting the job in the first place, but neither here nor there, and he's on board now. We became close. Really became Economic Development, Community Development, Trail Development. You were appointed, I don't know why the county council would appoint you to anything, but they did. No, I'm just kidding. Glad they did.
Commissioners did that.
Oh, Commissioners did.
The local board, all the commissioners.
What an amazing Parks Department from the Brew Fest. Look what we've done. We had 13 acres of park, and this summer we'll have a concert series, My Yellow Rixau. Where are you, Sarah? She's not here.
She's waiting on me to send that.
My Yellow Rixau, other bands are going to be here on the stage. A stage that five people had a hard time buying.
Is the right time for everything.
But they did. And I guarantee you, it'll be amazing. And that's Nathan. And Little League, the Little League and the Recs Project wouldn't be happening without my partnership with Nathan and Jason and Tanya and Glenn were instrumental in that as well, with their PR pieces they put together and telling the story. But Nathan and I really hit the road hard to talk to Little League. We ended up at the Little League World Series and we didn't know that it was on our bucket list, but we got very close there and the Mauer Project has come to fruition and become a reality. It's that team effort, so it's not me, it's not a me thing. We make mistakes, we all make mistakes. We all hold each other up when we do and we're all a big team here. So Nathan, I will miss you, but I can't drink more beer with you in public now. Apparently I have...
Why do you have a festival?
Yeah, absolutely. So thank you very much. I don't know what to say. We, our first interaction together was, I think I told Councilperson Austin back in 2010 or 11, that the utility trucks were driving much too fast by my house on Wimbledon Drive and Royal Run. You notice he said, he sure did. So with probably some trepidation, did Jason realize that I was going to be his manager in 2013, but immediately hit it off. He was utility manager and then we made him DPW Director. You know, the one thing that all the people see us do as a government is plowing the snow. It's just the one thing that sticks in people's minds. I think public safety is right up there, but on the Town Administration side, it's plowing the snow off the streets. Jason never complained, I don't think. Not loudly anyway, but he went with the program of responsiveness and transparency and, you know, yes, the customer isn't always right, but sometimes you have to make them feel like they're right. He did a good job of that. He became the number two around here. And he was a confidant to me. We bounced things off of each other, we got projects done. So, when you see this success, Jason has a lot to do with the success of the utility along with Councilperson Austin and the entire council for seeing the vision of the utility. But also the Street Department, the Department of Public Works, and other aspects of keeping the family together. And that's Jason and his attention to detail. So, I think that what we've done here, that people have asked, "Who's stepping in?", or "They're going to do a national search?", or "They're going to..." I missed a department leader. Jason, thank you. Janetta? How you've dealt with taking tickets for almost many years, I have no idea. But you've also been HR compliance, and now you'll direct HR functions for us. I encourage you to go to WGU, I encourage you to get in the Chambers HR classes. I think you and I sat at a luncheon last year and you got a certificate, and that's what we want to see. You were my executive assistant, and you always ask, "Is there anything I can do for you today, sir?" And I would come up with something, but not much. I know that you put up with me and we grew together and you were, you know, you were my Shannon, you were my Rhonda, Rhonda who's Jason's executive assistant. I appreciate you being there for me and answering phone calls and emails, keeping everybody else afloat as well, so greatly appreciate that. What this means is this is not, this has the wrong tag on it. This should stay here and it should stay presented to the Whitestown Staff Family. I just so happened to be, I don't know what I was, Big Brother, I guess? For a while? But I guess I'm speaking to the choir, because most of this is employees, not staff, but it's that staff family that was, that made this success happen. I just happened to be lucky to be the guy that they could throw ideas off of and I could help guide those ideas to become successful realities. And so I think from the bottom of my heart, I will miss seeing you every day. I will miss our interactions, I'll miss our ideas, I'll miss trying to get these people to see that our ideas were not so crazy and that they were good for the residents of Whitestown. So, from me to you, thank you and I will miss you. So thank you. Former Councilwoman Whitman, you were my first boss here. You were the Council President when I took the reins on the committee that brought me here. In a crazy wild email, do you remember, I sent an email to you and said, "Are you still looking for a Town Manager?", I think I...
Call me. I was on the retreat.
I was. I said, "Are you still looking for a Town Manager?", "I think I know a person." Asking for a friend. Here we are, right? You believe it, believe what's happened? And that started with you and your vision, and I can't thank you enough for bringing me on and taking a risk, and I know that these two were on that committee as well. It's been a great five years and that starts with you, because we were the first ones to interact together, so thank you. You haven't been on, you've been on, it's your third year, right? So you're starting your fourth. We haven't interacted nearly as much as we should, because you guys all have daily lives. I greatly appreciate your leadership, and I could always count on somebody, anybody, when I sent out an agenda or an item, can at least count on Jeff to call or, I didn't text, but call or email to ask questions, good ones. Now sometimes when we staff members get questions, we get a little frustrated. I know you guys aren't supposed to know that. But I think questions were answered and I really appreciated that of, you were kind of quietly taking, sitting back and thinking and stewing on these things and asking questions. So, I probably didn't say it enough in these last few years, but I thank you for your leadership and mentorship. but I thank you for your leadership and mentoring, and for doing things like asking those questions and getting us to good decisions. So, thank you very much, sir. Highly appreciate it.
Thank you.
I hugged Matt, I said thanks to Matt, so. Councilman Russell? We were, uh, we're standing here, right? It was our first project together, and from that point on, we became friends, and I would always call them bosses, and they would say, "No, you're, you know, don't say that," and that's what they were. We became friends, and we became each other's punching bag. Uh, we could yell at each other at times in that office, and, uh, we could bounce ideas off of each other, and we could hate each other for a moment, and then love each other the next day, and that was what you brought to this, is I, I had somebody to vent to. I had somebody to bring good ideas to. And you could then give advice on how we made those ideas reality, and then also good advice on what was kind of stupid and silly about those ideas, and how to make those better. And I thank you for your friendship, um, I thank you for your mentoring, and, and, uh, and thank you for your leadership, very much.
This was his first project, the building department.
Yes.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Mr. President?
Uh-oh.
New Mr. President. You also are a, you're, you're on the second council that I, I guess I worked for, and, except for what's that dirt on your shirt, which we've tried to get off for a long time.
Every single time.
Every single time. It was funny, Councilman Baum sent me, he sent me this questionnaire, this leadership questionnaire, I forget what you were doing, you were trying to get something going.
Yeah.
You were doing something with your day job, and basically what I thought of him, and you liked this. "What do you think of me as a leader?" Great, thank you. I could always be honest with you, though, and I think I was. I think I was very upfront and honest with you when I answered those questions. Always honest and upfront with you, um, when we had discussions. Very matter-of-fact, and you want things, you just want things done. I, I learned, I had a redevelopment commission meeting one time about how you want things done, and I went home that night and had about four or five Miller lights. All because of you. You know, but...
I do what I can.
Yes. Thank you for your mentoring and leadership as well. Councilperson, Councilwoman Austin, you've been at this the longest, am I right? Which one of you? You're crazy. We developed a relationship when I was the economic development director, and then I became your employee, and yes, you were, you are a boss, and you were always checking on, I think what Jason and I would tell you is, we always had somebody who was gonna check on us and be here, uh, to either quietly tell us something, or very sternly tell us something. And a lot of people don't know this, but you had interest in this job, am I right? Up, up to the point of me calling for a friend. And I think you said that I don't have interest anymore, I know who this needs to be, and that really gave me the opportunity to be here, so it's funny how things take place, but you've been, I don't want to use the mom term.
Too late.
I know, there's an event in the gym, my wife, my wife's sitting there, my wife's sitting there going, "Come on." See, look at her. That's why we don't bring her anywhere. But thank you, uh, very much for kind of letting us sometimes run ragged and getting this done, and most times keeping us on the straight and narrow. Your, your leadership and mentoring is very appreciated as well. Councilman Miller? I guess the council vice president is the chief executive of the town, and, uh, the boss boss, so, uh, good luck, good luck with the new president, guys. I don't, I don't even know what to say here. I think I've told you before that I haven't had a lot of bosses in my career, I can count them on, I think, one hand, or maybe go over to one finger on the other, by far at the tops of the list. And that was because of your style, which was a, is sometimes a soothing, um, I'll use, I won't use father figure, I can, but kind of a soothing leader and mentor, and when you work for the public, I know you're gonna find this hard to believe, you go home at night a little bit rattled, sometimes. You would always get me off the ledge, and always take me off the cliff, and, um, you'd always say, you know, "Find the best way to get it done." I think what sticks with us the most as a staff family is bring me solutions and not problems. And has always stuck with us. And so, we've always tried to bring solutions, but your leadership was, look around you, all of your leaderships. Um, but, but look, look around and see what's happened here. And so, sir, I, I thank you for five good years as the president of this council. I thank you all for all you've done for me and for the staff. And now, I guess I'm supposed to finally be quiet, which I know you're gonna be happy about. And I guess there's something that I haven't seen in the other, in the other room. So, I'll close with, thanks, everybody, I'm still gonna be around, um, and you'll, you're not gonna get rid of me that soon. Thanks, goodbye.
With that, there is a reception going on in the gymnasium. I encourage everyone to stop by and say hi, and share some of your thoughts, stories, and goodwill about DAX, so.
Motion to adjourn.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All those people say aye.
Aye.
Motion adopted, we all adjourn. Thank you, everyone, have a wonderful night, see you in the gym.
Congratulations.
You wanna give him this first key?